From every family who never imagined that their loved one would be taken from our lives by a bullet from a gun. Every time I think about those kids, it gets me mad.
Welcome to tonight's citywide town hall meeting on gun violence. With such a serious epidemic that our communities and our cities are facing, I think that it's only befitting that we start off tonight's citywide town hall with prayer. So it is my honor to invite my pastor, Dr. Donald Muhammad, who is the senior minister of the Nation of Islam here in St. Louis, under the leadership of Minister Farrakhan. Now, he is a Christian too, he would tell you that. Y'all see him with that old Mississippi walk?
All important events should begin with prayer. And I can't think of a better event, a more important event than what is going to go down here this evening. We are grateful and thankful to Almighty God that He has given us this opportunity to come together one more time. So please bow your heads. In the name of Allah, the benevolent merciful, all praise is due to Allah, Lord of the worlds. The benevolent merciful, master of this dead judgment which we now live. The alone that we serve, thine aid we seek, show us the straight path, the path of those whom thou hast bestowed favor, not the path of those whom wrath has brought down, nor those who go astray after they have heard thy teachings. Ameen. Thank you.
Now if you will please welcome the interim president here at Harris Stowe State University, Dr. Dwayne T. Smith.
Good evening. On behalf of the Board of Regents, the administration, the faculty and staff, and students that make up this illustrious community that is Harris Stowe State University, welcome to the only HBCU in the St. Louis region. Yes. I want to first thank the St. Louis African-American Automatic Caucus, particularly Alderman John Muhammad, for the leadership in organizing tonight's town hall meeting on gun violence, but also thank the Honorable Lacy Clay for his steadfast leadership and advocacy for our communities. Let's give him a round of applause. Harris Stowe is an engaged partner and plays a significant role in this community. So it's important that this event is held at Harris Stowe State University. Like many of you, I was, I am disheartened by the recent gun violence and death of innocent black children in our community. In an op-ed piece that in the St. Louis American earlier this week, I shared how the senseless death of eight-year-old Journey Thompson deeply touched me. So I didn't really know Journey, however, I'm a product of the West Side of St. Louis, the Holdam and Tracks, and the Wells Goodfellow neighborhood. The restaurant in which she was, she lost her life was a favorite spot for the Sudan Tigers after a football game. And that's what she was doing, she was enjoying life after a football game. The loss of Journey and other children of gun violence is overwhelmingly devastating because the majority of them were simply being children, playing, standing in front of their homes and out with siblings or caretakers. We must understand that while the focus is on St. Louis, gun violence is a national crisis. African-American children, specifically African-American boys, lead all ethnic groups in being the victim of gun violence. Studies suggest that African-American children are more likely to be a victim of gun violence than their racial peers. Of the recent reported gun deaths of children in the St. Louis region, 100% were African-American. 100% were African-American. The long-term effects are staggering. African-American children who are constantly exposed to guns and other types of violence suffer from post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, anger, healthlessness. As adults, they suffer from emotional and mental health challenges and drug and alcohol abuse. This is truly a health crisis. Historically, black colleges and universities have historically been at the forefront for the fight for social justice, equity, and dignity. As interim president of Harris Stowe State University, I am firmly committed to having our institution be grounded in providing a platform in which the difficult challenges that confront our city can be tackled. In the very near future, in this room here, we will convene a symposium on the impact of violence on children with the outcomes to create a solution-based framework. My hope this evening, as we marshal our resources, the sheer will and the courage to confront these problems at its core, let's engage for the betterment of our children. Again, welcome to Harris Stowe State University. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dwayne Smith, for opening up the doors of Harris Stowe for this very timely and crucial town hall meeting. And I'm sorry, I did not introduce myself. My name is John. Say hi, John. Hi, guys. I have the pleasure of serving as the Alderman of one of the greatest wards here in our city, and that is the 21st Ward located in North City, St. Louis. But it is my honor to introduce the Chairman of the St. Louis Aldermanic Black Caucus, the Alderman of the 22nd Ward, the Honorable Jeffrey Boyd.
Good evening. It is certainly great to see so many people here today to talk about, as President Dwayne Smith said, this health crisis that's going on in our community. But before I give too many remarks, I just want to give honor to some legislators that work diligently to help make St. Louis a better place. The African-American Black Caucus basically started this initiative a couple of months ago, and we reached out to our congressman to ask him if he would support us and sponsor this event and have conversation, you know, with our community to talk about this epidemic. So I want to first acknowledge my colleagues, you see their names up on the screen, the Alderman from the 2nd Ward, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Sam Moore, Alderman, of course, John Muhammad, Alderman Pam Boyd, Alderman Shamin Hubbard, Jesse Todd, and honor to our President Louis Reed. Also, the Board of Aldermen is working diligently together. Some people think we just fight, but we don't. We debate, we get our issues out. I want to acknowledge all my colleagues who are here. Stand up if you are a member of the Board of Aldermen and your name was not called, because I can't see everybody out there. So I want my colleagues to stand up. Okay, so everybody want to stand up? Okay, the ones' names were called, go ahead and stand up, so they can see your face. Alderman Middlebrook, Hubbard, Shamin Hubbard, alright? We are your team that's working hard on the North Side to make St. Louis a better place. So let's also acknowledge all of our other elected officials. I don't want to get in trouble and start calling names. I see our senators and state representatives here, but if you will stand all elected officials that represent the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County, I see some county officials here, would you please stand? So I'm gonna pretty much moderate and try to get us out here on time, but I want to say, you know, why are we here? Again, we are here because this is a health crisis. And everybody on this panel is a partner in helping come up with solutions to this problem. We want you to know that as a community, we hear you, we hear your outcry, we feel your pain. We're also, we also have pain as well, so we're right there with you. And I want everybody to understand that this is a community issue, and they will get better as we work together as a community. And this is what it's not about tonight. And I hope I can get everybody to agree and honor this. This is not about a blame game. This is not a Mayor Lyda Cruzen problem. This is not a Congressman Lacy Clay problem. This is not the Board of Aldermen's problem. This is not our state reps' problem. This is a community problem. And we want to put ourselves before you to start this communication and start this dialogue, so that we can come up with some meaningful and impactful solutions. So I want to kind of tell you a little bit how we're gonna flow. After me, I'm gonna introduce our congressman. We're gonna have remarks from President Louis Reed. We're gonna have remarks from Judge Jimmy Edwards, Public Safety Director. We're gonna have remarks from Christine Navalas, from Moms Demand Action Against Gun Violence. We're gonna have remarks from Dr. Mark Hoofnagle, who's a trauma surgeon with BJC. And then we're gonna have questions and answers, so that we can hear your voices. So without further ado, I would like to introduce our esteemed congressman for over 20 years, Lacy Clay.
Thank you so much, Jeffrey Alderman Boyd. Let me thank Chairman Boyd, and good evening, everyone. I appreciate all the hard work of Alderman John Muhammad and the Aldermanic Black Caucus for helping me present this town hall meeting. And I'm honored to be joined by President Reed, Judge Edwards, Christine Navalas of Moms Demand Action Against Gun Violence, and Dr. Mark Hoofnagle of Barnes Jewish Hospital and Washington University School of Medicine. Let me also recognize the Mayor of the City of St. Louis, Lyda Cruzen, whose family has also been victimized by gun violence. Thank you for your support. And we're here tonight because our nation and this community have reached a tipping point. We are in the midst of an epidemic of gun violence that's inflicting and devastating carnage on our community because of the culture of easy access to guns and the failure of some elected officials to stand up to the gun lobby. Across our region, this spring and summer, 17 young people have been shot to death, and that body count continues to rise every week. Most recently, three more young people were slain over this past weekend. So I come to you tonight not just as your congressman, but as a father too. And I send my love, courage, and strength to all of you who have lost loved ones to this violence. The deaths of these precious young people are an enormous tragedy, and their families will never be the same. But we will never be the same either, because we have lost their talents, their energy, and all of the remarkable things that they would have accomplished in the future. Most of you know that I've been fighting for common sense gun legislation my entire career. And tonight, I'm asking for your help in this battle to save our community and to save our nation. It's time to break the grip of the NRA on Congress and our state legislature. And we can do that. We can do that by adding your voice to this fight. I'm tired of the violence, I'm tired of the excuses, and I'm tired of some of my congressional colleagues in our state legislatures being either unable or just too frightened to do something about gun violence because they are afraid of the NRA. Now you know, the NRA initials stand for the National Rifle Association, but in Washington, we also call it No Republican Action. That's what it also means too. Let me tell you a little secret about fighting gun violence in both Washington and Jefferson City. If you want to do the right thing about gun control, all you have to do is love your constituents more than you love the NRA campaign donations. That's all you have to do. And that's easy for me, because I've never taken a dime of their blood money. So I need, I need you to do two things right now. First, we have two identical letters that I'd like you to sign and give back to my staff. They are addressed to Senator Roy Blunt and Senator Josh Hawley, urging them to demand that Majority Leader Mitch McConnell call back to U.S. Senate, back in the session, to immediately pass two enhanced background checks bills, H.R. 8 and H.R. 1112. Two vital bills, which the U.S. House passed in February. So we've been waiting over 180 days for McConnell to take up these bills in the Senate while our kids are still dying. Call the Senate back in the session, Mitch, and pass these bills that are supported by 90% of all Americans. What does it take? You know, second, I'm asking you to help me pass, H.R. 3435, the new legislation that would, for the first time at the federal level, give local governments the freedom to enact an assault weapons ban, a prohibition on high-capacity ammunition magazines, and a prohibition on open carry, and other common sense firearm regulations. And that would apply only to their own jurisdictions. So we're not talking about taking firearms away from someone who lives in Pima Sky County, Missouri. I don't care what you do out there, help us with this tragedy. Help us with this matter. You know, the bill is critical, because in 43 states, including this one, local governments are expressly prohibited from passing their own gun control measures to protect residents, neighborhoods, and first responders. When it comes to fighting gun violence, local control makes sense, and it will save lives. The community in this country, this community is crying out for help from Congress, and we must respond with urgent action. In St. Louis and across this nation, we are faced with an ugly, obscene, inescapable truth. Gun violence is a public health emergency. It's an emergency. So we need Congress to act now, not next month, not after the 1st of this year, not after the next election, but now, right now. Congress has the power to save American lives, and we should be doing nothing less. Let me say thank you, and I look forward to your questions tonight.
And now we'll have the President of the Board of Aldermen, Louis Reed, come for remarks.
Good evening. Tell you, it is a humbling experience to stand up here and see all of you come out tonight on such an important issue. It's also humbling when I look around and I think about all of the people across the city of St. Louis, the families that have lost loved ones. I truly want to thank the African-American Caucus for putting this on. Let's give them a big round of applause. So proud of our youngest Alderman, John Collins Muhammad. John, thank you for all that you're doing. So, you know, as a father of four, and someone who sat by my brother's bedside and held him as the life left out of him from a gunshot wound to the head. Every time I see these reports on TV and sit and talk with families across our city, it just hurts me to the core. Because I know there are things that we all could be doing, and things that the Republicans can do. They help us get to the bottom of this and help us to have a better world. But we're gonna have to push them. We're gonna have to require more out of them. We're gonna have to drive them to someplace they're not comfortable being. And if the human capital doesn't make them rise up and do something different, we need to reach out to them in a different way. History isn't made by the movement of one person. History is made by the movement of the masses. Dr. Martin Luther King didn't march on Washington by himself. Dr. Martin Luther King showed up with tens of thousands of people and said, "We come to cash a check." We need to begin that movement of the masses. And I look across this auditorium tonight, and I think we're on our way. We have to get behind something that can transform this nation. The bill that Congressman Clay is carrying can be one of those things to help transform this nation. So I'm here to tell you tonight that, St. Louis, this is our time. I know the days have been dark and the times have been tough, but this is our time to rise up and show this nation what change looks like. And for the, for the people who, the Republicans and folks, I'm sorry, have to, you know, agree with Congressman Clay, sometimes it's hard to get the Republicans to move on some of these things. We need to remind them that they told us they are the, they are the party of family values. So my question to you is, how can you value the family if you don't value the lives of everybody in the family? How can you value the family if you don't value the lives of all these young kids that are getting shot dead on the streets of the city of St. Louis while you protect the gun lobbyists? We're gonna have to ask them those questions, we're gonna have to drive it to them. And whether you're Democrat or Republican, if you're protecting the gun lobbyists, we need to challenge you. I don't care what you're doing with your time, but you're gonna have to do something else, because we can't afford for this nation to continue to go down the road it's going down. So I want to thank everybody that has worked to make these changes happen across our city and across our nation. But also I want to just remind you that you have a lot of power. You have the power to change people around you. Use your voice and your power to change the people within your inner circle, and that'll keep change going. So when I talk to my brothers and sisters tonight, I'm gonna tell them about this for them tonight. My brother in Baltimore, I'm gonna tell them about it, and I'm gonna ask them to go talk to his friends. My cousins, aunts, uncles, relatives, and friends, anybody that get me on the phone, I'm gonna talk to them about it, and I'm gonna ask them to go talk to a few more people. That's what a movement looks like. We need to get that movement started right here, St. Louis, this is our time. Don't let nobody tell you anything different, this is our time. My cousin Ronnie can tell you, is this our time, Ronnie? Dee Dee, can you tell me, is this our time? We're gonna get justice for my nephew, Burion. We're gonna get, we're gonna get justice for your son. We're gonna get justice for them. And that's what change looks like. That's what change looks like. That's what change looks like. Take that passion, and let's turn it, and let's change this nation. Let's get behind Congressman's bill and show them what change looks like, and show them that this is our time. Thank you.
My Lord, we would certainly want to thank Reverend Louis Reed, I mean, President Louis Reed, for that passionate remark. That's what's up, Louis. You know, gun violence has probably impacted everybody in this auditorium, one way or another. And we have somebody amongst us, and I think it's very fitting that she's invited to come and give remarks, who lost a spouse due to gun violence in the city of St. Louis. So I'm gonna call on our Mayor of the City of St. Louis to come up and give some remarks, because I know she's passionate about this as well.
I got a short timeline here, and I gotta follow Reverend Reed. Uh huh. On a serious note, we're here to talk about a very serious subject tonight. And I know that many of you in this audience have lost loved ones. And if you haven't lost a loved one, you know someone who has lost a loved one. And your lives, your lives are never the same again. But you know what? It doesn't have to be like this. It does not have to be like this. We don't have to accept this level of violence. We gotta support Congressman Clay's bill, and we've gotta support the people who support his bill. But we also have to look to our own state legislature, right here in the state of Missouri. We've gotta look to those folks. Here's what I want. This is simple. In the city of St. Louis, if you want to carry a gun, just get a permit. That's it, just get a permit. It's a small thing, you gotta have a permit to drive a car, you've gotta have a license to drive a car. Just get a permit. Now, why is that important? I know some of you are saying, "Well, the criminals, they're not gonna, they're not gonna do that." But here's why it's important. It's important to help our police department. If you have a permit, no problem. If you have a permit, you'll have a little bit of training. Back in January of 2017, just two and a half years ago, the state legislature thought it'd be a good idea if the state of Missouri became the first state in the nation to go from permit carry, we used to have to have a permit, two and a half years ago. That's not very long. They thought it'd be a great idea, "Oh, now we don't need any permits." So now, virtually anyone can carry a gun, virtually anywhere and anytime. And it is making easy access to guns, making easy access to guns way too difficult, way, way too easy. We need to make it more difficult. So that's a small thing, and... So that's a small thing and I'm only asking for it for the city of St. Louis. If they want to have a different law in Randolph County or, as the congressman says, Pama Scott County, that's okay with me. But when you're in the city of St. Louis, have a permit to carry a gun. It won't be expensive, it won't be difficult, but it will really help our police department and it will make us safer. So I want to say thank you for letting me say a couple of words tonight. You've got a lot of great people to hear from. I do want to give a shout out here to the two people on my team who are here this evening. Chief John Hayden, who is doing a fabulous job. And Judge Jimmy Edwards, who's the Director of Public Safety, who's doing a fabulous job. And I appreciate them and I appreciate every one of you for being here this evening. Thank you.
Okay, so the next speaker to come up is hopefully somebody that most of you guys have never had to stand before. Judge Jimmy Edwards. We're excited about Judge Edwards as our Public Safety Director. Yeah, give it up for the judge. Here comes the judge. I just want to personally say that, you know, Judge Edwards is really taking the bull by the horn and making some good strides and putting forth some great initiatives to help deal with crime overall in the city of St. Louis. And the mayor could not have picked a better person to be Public Safety Director than a former judge who understands the judicial system, who understands law, who, who understands what's really impacting our community because a lot of them have stood before him. Ladies and gentlemen, Judge Jimmy Edwards.
Thank you very much, Alderman Jeffrey Boyd. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge again Chief John Hayden. I think he's doing a fantastic job. And of course, the Mayor of the City of St. Louis. We together, we are one. We are solid together. The chief, the mayor and I, we agonize every single killing in the city of St. Louis. Before I start, I want to, to thank Ronnie. Ronnie Robinson called me the other day and, and Ronnie's son was, was murdered. But, but Ronnie called me just to make sure that I was still focused, that I was still encouraged. He said he just called me just to let me know that he supports what we're doing and he supports the police. So thank you so very much, Ronnie, for the call. You didn't have to do it. The city of St. Louis unequivocally supports Congressman Clay's gun bill, HR 3435, Local Public Health and Safety Protection Act. Congressman Clay's bill would allow the city to enact tougher gun laws and regulations, which is badly needed right here in our city. African American boys bear the brunt of gun violence as perpetrators and victims in the city of St. Louis. We have to be more outraged on many levels. The shootings in certain neighborhoods in the city of St. Louis have been brash and brazen and they will stop. The vast majority of the people that live in the same neighborhoods are good and low abiding people. Those responsible will be arrested and imprisoned. And anyone who conceals or hinders the prosecution of a shooter will also be arrested. To date, we have 134 homicides compared to 119 at the same time last year as compared to 136 in 2017. To date, we also have 100, I'm sorry, 1,651 non-fatal shootings. Yet, we are significantly below last year's numbers on all other type one offenses. Over 1,600 guns have been seized by the St. Louis Police Department to date. And to date, over 1,400 cases have been referred to the United States Attorney's Office for federal prosecutions because our current state laws do not make permitless carrying of a gun a crime. How shameful. Recently, St. Louis City Mayor Leiter Cruisen announced Crime Stoppers is offering $100,000 in rewards for information leading to the arrest involving the homicide of four children. Since the announcement of the rewards, Crime Stopper tips have increased, but more are still needed. I can tell you that overall, in the city of St. Louis, the police homicide unit has cleared about 50% of the homicide cases to date. What is the city doing to prevent shootings? We have to engage the community. The only way that we will stop or stem the shootings in our city, we need you. We need the community. Public safety is everybody's responsibility. So if you see something or if you hear something, be it as an eyewitness or on social media, please say something. Please, please say something. We need more police involvement with school safety programs. We have requested of the governor that he returns the State Highway Patrol back to Highway 70, back to Highway 4064, back to Highway 55, to Natural Bridge and Grab Boy. You see, we pay taxes too. We have to develop a more robust camera surveillance program in high-risk neighborhoods in North St. Louis. When the mayor and I came on board, we knew that there were about 1,100 cameras in the city of St. Louis. Most downtown, they paid for theirs in the central west end, some South St. Louis, but less than 200 in North City. We hope to change that. We hope to launch Cure Violence and other crime prevention programs so that we can have those people that live in those communities to become the eyes and the ears and the mouthpieces to help us reduce violent crime. We want to support community de-escalation programs like that at Better Family Life under the direction of James Clark. We request an amendment to the state permitless carry law. We would like for the legislative body in Jefferson City to take another look at the permitless carry gun law and repeal the same. We request an executive order from the governor. See, he can do it in an executive order and we have made that request and we make it again tonight. I've asked Alderman Jeffrey Boyd if he would consider an ordinance that would restrict the military-grade weaponry in our city as well as the high-powered ammunition. I've asked the FBI, the Secret Service and the St. Louis Police Department to consider an, a social media exploitation surveillance program. That's amount four. But we know that many of the events leading up to these homicides have been put on social media. And in order for us to address these social media threats, we need a social media solution. What's needed to invest or to investigate the arrest? What's needed now to hold those criminals accountable? Well, I am now where I started. We need community involvement. We need all of you. We need you. Community involvement is essential to public safety. Police presence, police presence in the community. Police presence in the community is important. Good police work is important. Hey, hey, that's fine. Hey, hey. Hey, please don't, uh, hey. All right. Hey. All right, hey, please don't, can I have your attention, please? Hey, let's not get angry with that brother. Let's not get upset with what he said. I understand the frustration. I understand the frustrations. I understand the frustrations. The efforts are being made. Everybody up here feels the exact same way. Everybody's trying their level best. And so when people want to talk, I try to give them an opportunity to talk. So we'll be respectful to you. Please be respectful to us. We're working on federal prosecutions of certain types of cases. We've engaged in federal task force. We have the assistance of all of the federal agencies working together with the St. Louis City Police Department. No one up here, no one up here wants anyone to be hurt or to be harmed. And we're trying our level best to make sure that it doesn't happen. Listen, we can have angry conversations. We didn't get like this overnight. This didn't happen in two weeks. This has been going on since 1857, if you recognize that. If you recognize that, then perhaps you stand back and you step back and you allow people to do their jobs. So the only thing that we're asking you is to let us do our jobs.
Okay, everybody, I want to say this. This is the first time that I can remember that the African American Caucus or the Board of Aldermen has called upon a town hall meeting so that we can speak to you as a community and hear some of your concerns. This is a process. I understand there are some people here may have heard some of this information before, but there are some, please be respectful, but there are some people here who have not heard this information. So we're asking you to be respectful. And if you feel that you've heard this information and that we have nothing to offer you, then there's an opportunity to leave because there are a lot of people who really came here because they really care about what's going on and they want to hear what needs to be said. We're gonna give you an opportunity to do Q and A. It's a process. Let's trust the process. Let's do something different that we haven't done before. So we're gonna ask for your patience as we get through this and we get to your questions. Can we do that? Okay. So the next person to speak is someone who advocates for mothers who have lost loved ones. And as somebody who have seen my sister-in-law struggle with the loss of my nephew a few years ago, I know what that pain feels like. I know what it looks like. And we want to have Ms. Christine Navalis with Moms Demand Action Against Gun Violence to give some remarks.
Thank you so much to Representative Clay and the members of the African American Caucus for bringing us together tonight to discuss the epidemic of gun violence that's plaguing our nation and our city. I'm a volunteer with the Missouri Chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We are part of Every Town for Gun Safety, which is the nation's largest gun violence prevention organization with over 6 million supporters nationwide. Our, our grassroots network, which is not just moms, we include and welcome everyone, is committed to taking on the NRA's dangerous agenda. We know that common sense gun laws and a culture of gun safety go hand in hand with responsible gun ownership. We want to keep all our families safe. The story of the devastation that our city has experienced this summer isn't mine to tell. So I thought a lot about what I could bring to this forum to share with you tonight and I kept coming back to what our governor said this week. He said, and I quote, "While the issue of how to reduce gun, reduce violence in our urban areas certainly needs to be addressed, there are also many different opinions on how to find a solution." And, and that statement in and of itself is true. There are a lot of opinions on how to end gun violence. So rather than focus on opinions tonight, I want to concentrate on three facts. The first one, doing nothing to end gun violence, which seems to be the preferred approach of many of our leaders in Congress and Jeff City, is not the solution. The, the second, while gun laws can make a real difference by reducing the supply of illegal guns, we also know that it's a fact that gun homicides and assaults disproportionately affect black Americans. Gun violence in the U.S. reflects and intensifies this country's longstanding racial inequities. We need to fund and support solutions that are specific to our cities like those have been, who have, that have been spoken about earlier tonight, such as the Cure Violence Program, crime prevention through environmental design, and offering positive alternatives to at-risk individuals and much more. When our lawmakers in Jefferson City pass dangerous gun laws or repeal ones that make us safer, we know that cities and in particular, communities of color are more significantly impacted. That's why we support Congressman Clay's Bill 3435, which would allow local governments to take common sense measures to address gun violence. And finally, my father is an engineer and I was raised to think very logically and, and rely on data for decision-making. So for my last fact, I want to look at the impact that gun laws have had on gun violence. And we hear the common misconception that gun laws don't work. And we know and we have an example from our own state that they do. Mayor Cruisen referenced earlier, in early, in the early 2000s, when Missouri decided to repeal its purchase to permit law requiring background checks, the state experienced a 27% increase in its firearm homicide rate and a 16% increase in our, in its firearm suicide rate. And we have a comparison for that because in Connecticut, at the same time, they passed a law requiring all handgun buyers to pass a background check, both at point of purchase and as part of the permit process. And they saw their gun homicide rate decrease by 40%. So we know that gun laws do work. There is no one solution. If there was, we would have already had it. But we're here tonight talking about the wide variety of solutions and of action that we can take to reduce gun violence. As our name implies, Moms Demand Action is an organization committed to action. Tonight Congressman Clay offered letters for us to sign to our own senators asking for... for Leader McConnell to bring back a special session to push through critical gun legislation. I'd like to offer you a way to double that impact. So if you would, if you have a cellphone handy tonight, I'd like to ask you to get out your cellphone, and then I'll give you a second to do that. This is quick and easy and doesn't sign you up for anything. But if you, if you text, if you start a new text message and you text the number 64433, okay, so that's the number that you're going to text it to, and you're going to text the word "checks," C-H-E-C-K-S. And then you're going to send that text message, and you're going to get back another text message that asks you for your zip code. So tonight, when you get home, tomorrow, when you have a chance, reply with your zip code, and here's what's going to happen. You're going to get a phone call immediately that's going to give you a brief, pre-recorded message, asking, telling you a bit about background checks and why they're so important. Absolutely, it's 64433, and the word is "checks," C-H-E-C-K-S. You'll get, you'll put in your zip code, you'll get a phone call. They'll tell you a little bit about passing background checks and why it is critically important, and then you'll be connected directly with your senator's office. And we encourage all of you to talk to your senator's office, to leave a message for your, for your senator, for our senators, and to really encourage them to pass through this legislation. So again, thank you so much for everybody up here. I'm honored to stand in the room with these leaders and with all of you, everyone here who is committed to ending gun violence. Thank you.
I'm not sure if some of you heard these astounding figures when the judge was up here about how many people have been assaulted by guns. He said 1,651 people were basically shot. They survived. 1,651 and 134 were murdered. Well, we're going to have somebody come up and talk to you that performs trauma surgery and probably have on plenty of people in our neighborhood. He's with BJC. His name is Dr. Mark Hoofnagle. I think I got that right. Doctor.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. Gun violence is an epidemic, and there are people who will continue to deny that. And as you said, denial is no longer a solution. When I was in my training and fellowship, I had a night where I failed to save someone's life. After intense efforts, I had to go out and tell his mother that he had died. And this is a terrible and difficult thing to do after all of the effort that you put in and seeing a young person die in front of you to then relay that information to their mother. And this mother, before I even sat down, said, "Don't tell me that my last child is dead from, is dead from a gun." Because she hadn't just lost one child. This was her second and last child, who was dead from gun violence. And then, about three months later, in The Washington Post, my mentor, Tom Scalia, wrote an article, and in it, he described a similar situation, trying to save a young man, and going to that room to sit down to his mother. And the young man's mother recognized him and said, "I know who you are. Please don't tell me that my last son is dead from a gun." And when I was reading that, I couldn't believe that we had both had this experience, to tell a mother that their last child was dead. Not just a single child, but every one of their children taken by gun violence. There are people that will deny that gun violence is an epidemic. But only gun violence epidemic could explain every last child being taken from a mother. That two mothers like that exist in this country is a shame. And we can't deny that an epidemic exists when there are parents like this, and I don't doubt there's more, and there probably are mothers like that here. So I study gun violence. And I study public policy and how it relates to gun violence, and I try to inform the debate so that people understand that there are things that we can do and that these laws do work. We can actually save lives. They've talked about multiple examples of that here tonight, and I'll tell you, it's absolutely true. The data supports the work. But there's people who will deny it. They will deny that gun violence is an epidemic. And there's no way that we can have these experiences and have these data and still deny that this is the case. And the only way that we're going to be able to convince the people who can do something about an epidemic to do something is to give them your experiences and let them know, and don't stop letting them know until they do something. Public health is a solution to epidemics. No individual can solve a public health problem. There are such big problems, we have to gather together and as a society, as a government, as a community, try to solve them. The very first public health problem that was described was cholera, where they began to understand why people were getting sick from this disease. And it was in London, and the prevailing opinion at the time is, oh, poverty causes cholera. And then someone sat down, and they put the data together, and they tracked down all the houses of all the people who got cholera, and they found out all of those people drew water from the same well. It wasn't poverty. It was a structure in their community. The same is true of gun violence. The violence is caused by structures that continue to spread violence down from generation to generation. We can study it. We do study it. A colleague of mine, Jessica Beard, did a study that showed that gun violence correlates perfectly with historical redlining. Another one of my colleagues studied how all you had to do in a community was invest $10,000 in rehabbing a community and making it look better, and you could save $200,000 in medical costs from the decrease in gunshots that they then experienced. The structures that we live in create this violence, and there are structures that can be changed if we have the will as a group to make the people who can change those structures change them. Gun violence is an epidemic. We're not going to let anyone deny that anymore. We have too much denial of science and facts. It's an epidemic. Let your congresspeople know. Let them know that we want to study it. We have to end the Dickey Amendment. We have to actually pay so that gun violence research can be done. I don't get paid to do this research. I do this research because I think it's important and that I want to prevent anyone else from getting shot, so I never have to walk into another room like that and tell a mother that her last child is dead. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Let's thank our congressman for being here and all of our panel members. Thank you, everyone.